Good evening. I'll call the session to order. All those who are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Secretary Iverson, are we in compliance with the open meeting law notification?
Yes, we are.
Thank you very much. Can we proceed to a roll call for verification of quorum?
Commissioner Harder?
Here.
Commissioner Clankhammer?
Here.
Commissioner Luganbill?
Here.
Commissioner Torres?
Here.
Commissioner Boo?
Commissioner Nordine?
Here.
Commissioner Bika? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our first point in the item, we have a public forum opportunity. Each citizen will be allowed up to four minutes to address the board, providing he or she has additional or new information that has not been previously shared at the meeting. The board will not hear personal complaints of school personnel or any person connected with the school system in a public forum. We have four presidents that signed up the list, and the first one is Beth Ivankovik.
Hi, my name is Beth Ivankovik, and I'm a founding member of the SEPTA group for the Eau Claire School District, which is the Special Ed Parent Teacher Association. And Karen and I are here tonight. We wanted to come by real quick. I'll just take a minute. Thank everyone who has supported us with this. We've met for two years. Every month, we've met at a different school in the district. We've had a different educational topic. We've had professors come and talk about ADHD. We've had a psychiatrist come and talk about anxiety. We've had just anything that, different educational topics that way. Our goals for this group are ears, education, advocacy, resources, and support. For advocacy, we've gone down to Madison, and we've really tried our best to talk to legislators about increasing special ed funding, and we're hoping that maybe we could make some little impact on that. For resources, every educational person that's come in to talk with us has given the group just a lot of handouts and information. For support, we're hoping that just by meeting, we are supporting not only parents and kids, but we're supporting our teachers, our staff, and our administration. So we would like to thank Mandy Van Vliet for really supporting us. Jim Schmidt has really been a big help for our group. We appreciate that. Joe has been very instrumental. So, thank you. You're all welcome to any of our group meetings, and if you have an idea or topic, we'd love to do it. For advocacy, I'm going to turn it over to Karen for the next one. We'd really like to work on some inclusion programs. Thank you.
And this is Karen Pykert?
Yes. I'll do my best to stay out for a minute. Thanks. So, my son Kyle is 20 years old. He would be called a super senior at Memorial. He'll be in Project Search next year. And my involvement in the SEPTA has really had a lot to do with what do I wish we had when he was younger? And that's the lens through I see, that I see a lot of things through. I wish I had more knowledge. I wish I had more support. I wish I had connections. I wish I had more courage. And looking back on our years, there's really one thing I wish we had more of, and that's inclusion. There was a time in elementary school that my son spent a fair amount of time in the gen ed classes, and I thought inclusion was something that would just happen easily and naturally all the way through his schooling. I'm sad to say that's not necessarily the case for a lot of our students. For all the diversity and inclusion advocacy that we hear about, children with special needs are often left behind and left out. They're left out of playgroups at recess, and very often only sit with other children with disabilities at lunch. They play on separate sports teams, take separate buses, may take only separate classes, and their social circles sometimes are about the size of their self-contained classroom. Gen ed students today are what I like to call inclusion natives. They're really wired for acceptance, and I think they would rise to the occasion if we would model inclusion for our children with disabilities a little bit different. And I'm here today to ask if we, as a district, can do more and reach a little higher in that regard. Our SEPTA group would like to ask for the Eau Claire School District to consider becoming the first large Unified Champion School District in the state of Wisconsin. We recently brought this up with Mandy and Lori Malnory. They're happy to provide a little more background information for you. I've got a flyer that came from, if you want to pass those along, that would be great. The Unified Champion Program is a federally funded school-based program of the Special Olympics. It aims to promote social inclusion through planned activities that affect system-wide change. It's a three-component model that includes youth leadership, whole-school engagement, and inclusive clubs and sports. The program's designed to be woven into the fabric of a school to address the social and emotional needs of all learners, fostering a school climate where students with disabilities are routinely included in all activities, all opportunities, and all functions. This program was created by the Special Olympics, but it is distinct from the Special Olympics teams and coaches. This past year, Stephanie Travis, head coach of Special Olympics in the district, took the steps necessary to have North and Memorial become Unified Champion Schools. The Northwoods Elementary staff recently directly connected Special Olympics Wisconsin to evaluate whether their school could become a unified school. Every school would do things their own way. There would be no set pattern that every school would have to do things exactly the same. One elementary school could have a Lunch Buddy program. One could have Unified Safety Patrol. One could have an inclusive kickball club. The middle schools would look different. The high schools would look different. The variety and possibilities are endless, but the one thing I know for sure is that all students, disabled and non-disabled, would benefit. There's a lot more I'd love for you to know about this program, and how it really would change the social fabric of our school district, reduce bullying, and improve the emotional well-being of both disabled and non-disabled students. I'd ask maybe if, as a board, you could discuss this, and if you are interested in it, put it on your board agenda, and we could bring someone in from Special Olympics Wisconsin, who is the chairperson for Unified Schools. And they would describe the program, tell you, "This is good. Federal funding is available for launching of these programs in the schools." And they could give you an idea of what it would mean to have Eau Claire really take the lead in the state for this initiative. Thank you so much. Inclusion is personal, and the absence of it is heartbreaking. And I know you all, I get a little choked up. So, thank you for listening, and I hope this is a conversation we can continue to have.
Thank you very much. The next person in the list is Shayna Schmidt.
Hi, my name is Shayna Schmidt. I live at 3212 County Farm Road, Eau Claire. I'm here tonight to request that the board carefully consider whether it's prepared to move forward with the recommendation from the Demographic Trends Committee to redraw boundaries for seven elementary schools on the north side of the district. I know the board and the public have been provided a lot of information about which factors were taken into account when making this recommendation, but tonight I'd like to outline several things the public still does not know, and information that has not yet been explored or shared. Tonight's presentation includes costs of up to $14.5 million to address capacity issues for 4K. We do not know yet what the precise needs of 4K will be in the future. Prior to specific DPI directives regarding full-day 4K and the passing of a state budget with funding for this effort, planning a brand-new 4K facility is premature. Reserving space in an existing district building for more 4K classrooms is a far more economical use of taxpayer dollars. Furthermore, we do not know whether opening a second 4K center would negatively affect the district's community sites, or if they could potentially expand to accommodate full-day needs. We do not have precise enrollment projections for elementary schools across the district. Though the district has referred to the APL study that is used to track and project enrollment trends, this study was completed in 2015 and did not account for new housing development in its projections. The study should be updated so that planning for the growth in certain schools and lack of growth in others is founded in reliable predictive data and not speculation. This is particularly important when the board is considering critical decisions about expanding, opening, and closing schools. While it is clear that a referendum would be necessary to proceed with any option involving a facility plan, we do not know if the feasibility of passing a referendum has been explored, or for how much money it would include, to address any of the capacity issues presented thus far, including an expansion of Roosevelt, a new 4K facility, or expansion on the south side. We do not know what the plan for middle school boundaries will be if this plan is adopted. Changing boundaries for elementary schools without having this plan in place creates continued uncertainty for students and families following a very difficult and uncertain year. Based on information shared by Demo Trends, the committee's newest recommendation would move approximately 275 students out of their current elementary school boundaries, accounting for about 11% of the total population of these schools. As an alternative, the community proposal for flexible boundaries would move fewer than 30 students, cost less, and provide the flexibility needed to accommodate new growth across the north and west side of the district. With these points in mind, I urge the board to adopt the Flex Plan and hold off on drastically shifting boundaries in any portion of the district until growth is better understood and future expansion and referendum plans are in place. We have been informed that south side boundaries will be adjusted only after an expansion plan is developed and approved by the board, even as three of these schools sit above 90% capacity. I request that the same process be employed for schools across the entire district. Finally, at the very least, with these recommended boundary changes and with any future ones, please consider allowing continuous enrollment of students or grandfathering in as a standard practice. The recommendation being made tonight would shift hundreds of students, many of whom may be in their last year or two of elementary school, in a building they have grown up in. Students in this district deserve to know that when they enroll at a school, they will be allowed to remain there until they graduate or move on, regardless of the population trends that warrant boundary shifts throughout the district. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have next Mark Goings.
Good evening. My name is Mark Goings. I live at E17450 County Road V in Augusta, and tonight I'm speaking as the president of the Association of Educators. Tonight, as part of the board's agenda, we're looking at proposed changes to the handbook. And I'd like to point out a few that I'd like you to take a special look at. On page four of tonight's presentation, beginning with Section 10 Sick Leave, we're looking at the Sick Leave Donation Bank. Through page six, at the conclusion of Personal Leave Request Procedures, I would hope that the board considered leaving the language in those sections as is. And the reason for that, first of all, with the sick bank, as a district, there's only so, you are already budgeting a certain number of sick days and personal days per person. What the sick bank has allowed us to do as a district is we've been able to help our colleagues when they are having an event year. And it was just a couple of years ago, we actually expanded the language a little bit in that. And at that time, you may remember, we were facing large amounts for our staff leaving. We're looking for some no-cost, low-cost sorts of things we could do. One of the things we looked in at that time was, if you're having an event year and you get down to five days or less that you have, then if your sick bankable event is a major event, you could apply to the sick bank. And what that did is, for our colleagues, we were able to donate to somebody to help give them the peace of mind to realize that, hey, you know, get through that surgery, get through that treatment, you know, your sick days, we will chip in for that. Again, it's not, it does not cost the district more days total. It just allows us to shift those around. And in doing that, so then that person could apply for up to 20 days, and that helped them deal with what they were dealing with physically. In our current proposal, it's saying that they need to get, to use up all their days, and then get a doctor's request, and then see if they can get some more. At a very stressful time in their life, that timing would be huge. Now, one of the things that I do realize is that the increase, there has been an increase in days donated, but that is not necessarily equate to the increase in days used, because we have people that retire or leave the district with days in their bank that just go away. You know, they're not compensated for those. And so, in that sense, they're in the computer, but they disappear. Now, as part of the section on personal leave, the reason I object to that is, our current system, if you plan ahead, you can use your personal days. So, as an educator, I could only have a maximum of five days anytime. And for example, my oldest is getting married in October. I should be able to put in that I'd like to take Thursday and Friday off. This proposed language says that it may not even be able to be taken consecutively unless my supervisor approves it even that far out. In our current language, if you put it in 20 days ahead of time or more, they are granted. It concerns me that it's taking out all of that language of asking the person to plan ahead. So, if the district needs more time, you know, perhaps having to be 30 business days ahead of time. But the idea of everything comes down to your principals or to your supervisor's discretion very much concerns me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's all for our public forum. Next point in the agenda is the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to review the upcoming events for the school board. All the meetings will take place at the administration building unless otherwise noted. On May 21st, the Eau Claire Virtual School Board will meet at 4:30 PM. The Budget Development Committee will meet at 1:00 PM. There will be a celebration of service banquet, and that is on May 22nd, that's at 5:00 PM, and that will be held at Florian Gardens. The graduations will be held on May 30th for Memorial at Zorn Arena at 7:00 PM, and Norris graduation will be held on May 31st in the North Doghouse at 7:00 PM. Policy and Governance will meet on June 3rd, 8:45. There will be a school board meeting on June 3rd at 7:00 PM, and on June 5th, the McKinley Competency Graduation will take place in the DeLong Auditorium at 7:00 PM. Tonight, we have a very special student recognition. Alexandra Beinborn is here, I think, and she's sitting there on the front row. Alexandra, would you stand up, please? She's a junior at Memorial High School, and she is being recognized because she achieved Nationwide, there are about one out of every 500 students who obtain the perfect score, but I think the real kind of icing on the cake for this is that a perfect score is an individual accomplishment, and it shows Alexandra's dedication to academics, her willingness to learn, and an ability to apply that learning. So, Alexandra, we are very proud of you. We know that you are involved in many, many school events, and that you are a very busy person, and yet you still find time to be perfect. So, thank you.[1164.58][1164.58](LAUGHTER). And that's my report for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hardback. Next on the agenda is the board president's report. I don't have a report yet, but I would like to share with you five ideas that I tried to express last, in our last session, but it didn't come out in the way I would have liked. I didn't have time to think. So, I'll use this opportunity just to lay out what I call goals, or there are more principles for our work as a board, if you don't mind. The first one is vision-directed planning. Our vision, as we can see on the wall, is to challenge minds, build relationships, and nurture individual growth to prepare all students for post-secondary success. But where do we see ourselves in 2030? What challenges do we have in front of us? What is the role that public education needs to continue playing? What changes do we need to make, and how do we want to grow? How will we engage teachers, staff, and community at large? I would like to initiate a planning process that clearly directs the board policymaking and resource allocation in support of student learning. Second, a balanced governance model, which we have been trying to achieve in the past two years. Given the pressure to improve student outcomes on everything from content knowledge to skills identified as necessary for career and college success, school boards cannot be passive players. Neither can we replace the specialized knowledge of superintendents and administrators trained in the complex matters of running school districts. However, boards that leverage their own expertise as engaged and knowledgeable representatives of their communities can play a critical role in the kind of investments that they decide to make in student learning. I think it is important to consider that school systems that grant more autonomy to schools to define, differentiate their curriculum, and assess their interventions perform better than systems that don't. I think that there is a positive correlation in school autonomy for resource allocation to address self-identified needs for improvement and improve student performance and intellectual growth. Within this model, we need to understand that innovation and creativity are assets to the process of development and change, leading to new types of thinking and better ways of meeting students' needs. Innovation and creativity are not predictable, but can flourish when boards align their vision throughout the organization, model collaborative leadership, and engage with ease in dialogue, new ideas, and different perspectives. Three, learning organizations. We are a learning organization, and that's what I like the most about this board. That is, we are a self-renewing professional, a self-renewing professional community that supports reflection, discovery, learning, improvement, and success at all levels. Our board is supposed to provide focus, give a sense of direction, and set high expectations. In that sense, we need to ponder how do our governance practices affect student achievement? How can we create a mechanism to receive direct input from principals and teachers about their strategies included in their improvement plans? We need to ask ourselves, how can they own their growth and take pride in their professional efforts? This conversation will inform our efforts to prioritize innovative efforts that are necessarily tied to school improvement plans. Systems thinking will allow us to break out of the box of single-district thinking and act on an integrated view of education within and across systems and levels. I'm talking about K-12, community college, and university. Boards that practice systems thinking open the door for collaborative local, state, and national partnerships, coordinated programs, and shared resources models to improve student learning. Four, cultural responsiveness. The cultural diversity of our community has multiple aspects: social, economic, political, religious, geographical, generational, linguistic, ethnic, racial, and gender, to name just a few. We, as a board, need to continue developing a shared understanding of this diversity and uphold perspectives that reflect the cultures in our community. Effective community engagement and expectancy strategies built on the strengths of a community's cultural diversity. And finally, student learning. I think that we all can agree that every school should have a full, balanced, and rich curriculum, including the arts, science, history, literature, civics, geography, foreign languages, mathematics, technology, and physical education. And while we work in college and career readiness, let's rekindle with the notion that the central purpose of education is to prepare everyone to assume the rights and responsibilities of citizenship in a democracy. That ultimate purpose is not achievable if the educational outcomes are not as successful for everyone. We need to continue focus on equitable approaches to reduce and close the achievement gap, increase academic growth, and do so with fiscal responsibility. We need to move forward to a model where we can see the actual per pupil expenditure per building. Our budget needs to reflect where our priorities are. Our district must articulate system improvement plans that include equity review processes. We need to make a plan on how we're going to do that. The reconsolidation of LEAP zones is a good step forward in this sense. Within those plans, we also need to make sure that we affirm a sense of agency and autonomy for all our students so that their schooling experience is fundamentally a democratic experience. Within those plans, finally, we also need to remove structural barriers that prevent or hinder authentic, culturally responsive, and equitably inclusive teaching practices. I thought that the exercise of putting these ideas in writing would help me make sense of our discussions, and hopefully will help you make sense of our discussions in a broader frame. So, I'm looking forward to working with you, and that's it. Thank you. Our next point in the agenda is other reports, school board committee reports. Budget? Oh, sorry, I skipped one point. We have student representatives' reports.
Well, first of all, I would like to thank the board for this tremendous opportunity this past year. What an incredible learning experience I have had over the course of these meetings. And I have learned lessons here that I will carry on, not only toward my college education, but it's really changed my lens of all of education, and even extending beyond my years here. I would like to, again, thank you.
Thank you, Gwen.
Yeah, I wasn't here last week, so just a quick update. Obviously, North, the 2018-2019 school year is wrapping up. North had its prom, its mock car crash presentation, the Pride Awards were just last week. Seniors now have their caps and gowns. Students are finishing up the school year strong and preparing for finals and the end of the year activities. And finally, I also wanted to thank the board for giving me this opportunity. I've learned a lot being on the board for this past semester, and I've learned a lot of valuable lessons that I believe will assist me on my college education and my post-high school plans, and then hopefully beyond as well. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, and I would like to invite Commissioner Luganbill to interpret our feelings about your work.
Yeah, so it's my pleasure to recognize our outgoing student representatives, as tonight is their last meeting. So, I want to recognize Gwen Haywood from Memorial High School, as well as Abby Green and Molly Green, who are our two student representatives from North High School. And Abby's in the audience, so if you want to maybe stand and just wave quickly? There we go. I really hope that this year has been interesting and enjoyable for you and educational for you. I know it always is for us to have your perspective here. I think that for any school district, it changes the dynamic of the whole room and of the whole meeting when students have a constant presence, and that's so important and so special and valuable. So, thank you for that. You know, over the past year, you have done a fine job representing your schools and the interests of your student body. You've asked us some pretty important questions throughout the meetings, and you've also spoken up, and sometimes you've done so on topics that are difficult topics and require a great deal of courage, and sometimes perhaps unpopular among even your own student body back at your school. So, you've done a great job, and I look forward, we all look forward, to seeing what you do in the future. And on behalf of the board, I want to congratulate the three of you and wish you the very best in the future, and we do have some parting gifts for you also. So, thank you so much.[1794.24][1794.24](APPLAUSE).
Gwen Haywood. Abby?
Thank you very much.
And Molly.
And, which is always fun, at our next meeting, we'll be able to introduce to you our new student representatives that we've chosen. So we look forward to continuing this great tradition in our school district that's so valuable and so, so special in many ways. So, thank you.
And thank you, Commissioner Lugenbaugh, for your work in interviewing the candidates. Our next point in the agenda is now other reports, so school board committee reports. We can start with the budget committee?
Well, I guess I'll speak to budget. We haven't met yet. We're still kind of on hold with the, being in flux organization as we are.
Okay, thank you very much. LEAP committee?
LEAP met last Tuesday. We approved the policy, and it looks like we're going to have a first reading of that tonight, so we're excited about that. And then we also had a presentation from the O-Zone folks, and they, they sort of got us started. We had a great conversation about their proposal, and we look forward to moving them through the steps that we've created under the policy.
Thank you very much. The Policy and Governance Committee met this morning, and we have two policies recommended for the full board consideration. One being the communications with tribal authorities, and the second one, the LEAP structure. Next point in the agenda is our Consent Resolution Agenda. The board will consider approval of the Consent Resolution Agenda items. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background material on each item and/or has discussed it at a previous meeting. This will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and voted on separately. The items are 7.2, minutes of May 6, 2019; financial report, April 2019; 2018, 19 budget adjustments, 7.6, gifts in the amount of $25,391.59 for the period of April 1, 2019 through April 30, 2019; 7.7, payment of all bills in the amount of $12,117,756.84, a net payroll in the amount of $3,534,423.51 for the period of April 1, 2019 through April 30, 2019; 7.8, Human Resources Employment Report; 7.9, 2019-20 WIAA Membership Approval; 7.10, Authorization to Executive Directors for Summer Months; 7.11, 2019-20 Meal Prices; 7.12, Revisions to Policy 447, Student Discipline and Positive Behavior Interventions; 7.13, Revisions to Policy 443.5, Student Use of Electronic Devices.
I move approval.
I need a second?
Second.
All those who approve?
We do have to do a roll call.
We'll have, we'll have a roll call because we have budget items.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Klinkhammer?
Yes.
Commissioner Lugenbaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Nardine?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Now we will move on to individually consider resolutions. Appoint school board committee assignments. If not, I will request a motion to approve them.
I'll make a motion.
A second?
Second.
Having a motion and a second, please say aye if you approve.
Aye.
Those who oppose, and those who abstain. The appointment of school board committee's assignments has been approved. Next point in the agenda is the final recommendations of Equity Committee for Athletics and Facility Use. And for this report, we have Ms. Kohler.
So, good evening. Tonight, I'd like to share with you the final recommendations from the Equity Committee for Athletics and Facility Use. There are two recommendations before the board tonight. One is around community user classification and the other around district-recognized holidays. The proposals before you today include changes to the classification system that you can see here. Previously, there were six classes. It's really been distilled down to four classes. The new structure doesn't change the way that we prioritize groups. In fact, really, the only difference is that community users would notice is that it's a little bit simpler and easier to understand. So, as an example, one of the things we noticed earlier is that class, the current, or what the proposed Class II activities organized by and under the jurisdiction of Eau Claire Parks and Recreation previously was split into activities for children in one class and activities for adults in another class. So that would have previously been Class II and III, but the fee structure for both classes and the time that they could reserve the buildings for both classes was identical. So essentially, the committee said, if we treat them identically, why don't we put them in the same group or class? And so we did that. So, looking at similarities with that, we distilled it down to the four groups that you see there. The second proposal in the agreement is to differentiate the requirements around holidays that are recognized within the District Employee Handbook. Feedback from families, students, coaches also supported the proposed change that you see there. The intent of this proposal is to create a family-friendly structure that also recognizes the important role that practices play to keep athletes safe during competitions. So within this proposal, we, we propose that for community users, we restrict them from scheduling events on the district-recognized holidays. We also propose to restrict middle school activities and athletics from scheduling events on the district-recognized holidays, but we do propose a change in high school activities and athletics. And the changes that we propose are that we would permit high school activities and athletics to schedule on these days with the following conditions. First of all, any events or practices on those days must be approved by the athletic director. Second, coaches, advisors, and athletic directors need to take time and, family time into consideration when scheduling the practices and the competitions on or around those dates. For example, over Memorial Day weekend, any practice scheduled would preserve the majority of the weekend for family activities, such as scheduling a practice early on a Saturday morning or very late on Memorial Day, but not both. And I can give you a real-life example of something happening this weekend. Because we prohibit practices currently on Memorial Day, I know an athletic team at one of our high schools that is practicing Sunday in the middle of the day. And so it, it essentially breaks up the whole weekend for the family, which is what this committee is trying to avoid. And then the third condition would be an explicit requirement that a participant who prioritizes family over the school event scheduled on the above holidays shall not be penalized or published. That was added because of the, the intent to really preserve the family time and to give athletes and participants in other activities the option to prioritize family time during, during the holidays. The discussion, a lot of the discussion around this change in particular for athletics actually came around student safety. So there are some things that we aren't able to control as a district, and I'll give you another concrete example for that. JV football is scheduled in our conference on Tuesday nights. So if you have a JV football player, they will play games on Tuesday nights. Tuesday follows Labor Day, and that means that students are going right from a long weekend into a competition in a high-contact sport, which can cause a risk of injury that they might not see had they had practice the day before. So that was one of the examples that the coaches had given around student safety. And again, also though emphasizing the intent to preserve family time around this. So try to provide contact and keep students safe, but also provide families the opportunity to have an extended holiday weekend. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or entertain any discussion around those two changes.
Thank you very much. Questions from board members? Yeah, Commissioner Harder?
Thanks for the report. I haven't been too involved in this discussion, but I've been watching it, and it looks to me like this has been sort of, sort of worked through as a kind of a compromise, obviously balancing that desire to have additional time for, for the coaches, but also balancing the family time in.
Right.
I assume it was the families, or some families, expressing concerns about that that led to some of that adding in. Do you have a sense that it's, that people are happy with this compromise?
Yeah, so on our committee, we actually, the committee was, consisted of student athletes, coaches, and family members or community members. And we also did some surveying or reaching out to ask stakeholders what their thoughts were. This is, the holidays is the topic that grabbed the most attention of the committee, and it really was around a well-intended idea that when implemented actually is sometimes counterproductive. And I think the example that I gave with that Sunday practice, Memorial Day weekend, that, you know, families for that team have a weekend, an interrupted weekend now, where if, if we could allow it, perhaps the evening of Memorial Day, they could still stretch a weekend out.
Thank you. I just want to thank you, Ms. Kohler, and thank the members of the Equity Committee that worked on this issue and all the various stakeholders that they consulted. It sounds like the majority of the folks involved with the process are happy with these changes and see it as a good compromise and a good path forward. So I'll be happily supporting them tonight.
Any other questions? Hearing none, then we will ask for a vote to approve the report. Now, this report is asking for an exception to the policy, right?
The, oh goodness, you're testing my memory. The, this was in the facility use agreement, and so the facility use agreements that you have before you reflect what is proposed. So if this is not, if this is what is going to be voted on and approved, we do not need to change those facility use agreements. If we are going to make changes in what is proposed, it would come on those facility use agreements.
Yeah, Commissioner Lugenbaugh?
I'll make a motion. I move that we approve the recommended changes to the facility use agreement for community use and facility use agreement for ECASD activities and events.
Thank you. There is a motion on the table, and I need a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Harder. Any further discussion? Hearing none, then we'll proceed to a vote. Let's do a roll call.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Klinkhammer?
Yes.
Commissioner Lugenbaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Nardine?
Yes.
Thank you very much. We have approved the report and modifications. Thank you very much for the work that you have completed. I know that you've worked several months on, on this process, and we do appreciate the participation of all the stakeholders in the process.
Thank you.
Our next point in the agenda is the 2019-2020 Employee Handbook Modifications.
Oh, alright. So that's you, Dan.
Oh, sorry, I skipped one line.
It is. Oh, sorry that you're in here.
Well, I have a problem with this tiny font. So, I excuse myself. Demographic Trends and Facility Planning Committee Recommendation.
And that is me again, and Phil Lyons is here again tonight. So as you know, Phil is the committee chair of the Demographic Trends and Facility Planning Committee. And we are here before you tonight to talk about the options that were before the committee after the last board meeting. So after the last board meeting, or at the last board meeting, Phil and I presented two options to the, to the board and recommended taking the newly-presented community proposal to the full committee for further examination and discussion. The command, committee would look at both its current recommendation before the board as well as that community proposal, comparing the benefits and challenges of each, the estimated costs, and really whether or not, or how each proposal met the guidelines set out for the committee. And so Phil is here tonight to share the committee's work and has a recommendation from the committee to share with you as well.
Thanks, Kim. Good evening, board. Superintendent Hardbeck. It's a pleasure to be here tonight and share with you the findings of, and the work of the committee. At our last committee meeting, which was May 16, the committee reviewed the community proposal that is depicted here in a map form. The committee examined several questions surrounding the proposal that included things like, does the recommendation meet the guidelines of the committee? What are the costs of the proposal? And what is the impact on students when enrollment is between 90% and 100%? And that last point, we talked quite a bit about, because the, the guidelines of the committee really call us to, to get enrollments under 100%, but the committee has always had a guideline of 90%. And we really talked quite a bit about, what does that mean? What is the impact on the student? What is the impact on the educational environment? And that really, the committee should come back and take a look at that 100% when in reality, our goal was 90%. The committee had some conclusions on the, the community proposal, and these are the benefits. The committee had some conclusions on the community proposal. And these are the benefits. Probably the most striking benefit is you'll see that less than 30 students were asked to switch schools in 2020, 2021. A significant less amount than the third option that the committee recommended. Other benefits, the school placement is flexible at the time of enrollment. It does maintain Roosevelt as a two-section school. It provides options to relieve pressure at Lakeshore and Roosevelt when new families enroll. It provides a 4K site at Locust Lane for less cost than a new facility. It utilizes five very underutilized classrooms for 4K classes. And creating an enrollment plan within a database is a very minimal cost to the district, roughly about $6,000. But the community proposal is also not without some challenges. There's limitations to the flexibility. So the flexible enrollment is really available at the time of enrollment only. That would limit flexibility to balance enrollment after that initial assignment of the student. The next two are really cost-related. Student Transit estimated that this would cost annually about $150,000 a year. Why? Because we would need to add about four additional buses within those flexible boundary lines for the elementary and middle school routes. And also, there's ongoing clerical support that would be needed. There's manual assignment of enrollment for each house within that flexible area within real estate databases would need to be done manually. And the estimate of workload that that would take in the data cleanup and the reporting and the continual updating of that database would be about a halftime position or about $50,000 a year. So in all cumulatively, the plan does cost about $200,000 annually. And then finally, overcrowding. Because the flexible plan allows for current students to be grandfathered into Roosevelt, it does remain at above 90% capacity for the next several years. So in 2016, you may recall, some Roosevelt staff did submit some testimonial talking about the fact that Roosevelt was overcrowded and that that resulted in many challenges in the educational environment. So that was something we were trying to alleviate as we brought forward these recommendations. So these are the two options before the committee. And the, there's some similarities in these proposals, and then there's some striking differences. Those middle two that you'll see, that one calls, they both call for a $2 to $3 million secure entrance and deferred maintenance at Roosevelt. Those are basically the same. They also both call for an estimated 16 to 18 million to address the capacity issues that we know is an issue for the South Side Elementary Schools. They differ in two very significant ways. The top, you will see that there really isn't a cost in what the committee did to reestablish elementary boundaries. It's really cost-neutral. As I said previously, the committee proposal does reestablish those flexible boundaries, and the flexible boundaries do come with a cost in busing and workload. And that was estimated to be $200,000 a year. The, the community plan does address some 4K. It addresses it using underutilized space at Locust Lane. Those costs are estimated at 150 to 200,000. And it's important to probably note that that really is much more of a Band-Aid. You will find that the committee, we didn't really dive into a 4K. And it's one of the recommendations going forward that we do much more work on this. What we do know is that the political landscape on 4K continues to change and shift. And we know that Prairie Ridge has some overcrowding problems. We've held meetings there, we've seen it. So we still need to look into that. In the DemoTrends third option, we did estimate that 13 to 14.5 million is a bookmark. It's an estimate to address the capacity issues that 4K creates. And so after some very careful consideration, and really a very, very thoughtful discussion at the May 16th meeting, the committee did vote nearly unanimously to reaffirm the previous recommendation, which was Option 3. The committee believed that that recommendation meets all of the guidelines, the stated principles of the committee. We believed that it provided a long-term and a stable solution. And the Roosevelt portion does not impact the annual operating budget of the district. So we felt, and voted nearly unanimously, that this was the recommendation that we are forwarding to the board. As I mentioned, there are some next steps. We now believe on the elementary that this is the final recommendation of the committee. And so we would await board approval of the elementary facilities recommendation. We do need to determine the impact and plan for middle school boundaries, because we focus mainly on elementary, and this may and would potentially impact the middle school boundaries. And we really need to take a dive into studying the 4K and the elementary expansion options to make a future recommendation to the board. And we would recommend that you charge us with that. And then finally, we do appreciate recent board activity with the committee and for participation in the work group. And we would await appointment of board members to the committee. And at that time, we would take any, I'd be open to taking any questions.
Thank you very much for the report. I know that you've worked very diligently in putting it together. And you've been also very flexible in meeting with community members that had additional ideas for your consideration. Now, I'll open it to questions and commentaries from the board members? Hearing none, I'll open it to questions from the public? Or commentaries? Please say your name and your address, and you're welcome to make your question.
Thank you. I have a few clarifications I'd like. So I attended the work group session and also the latest DemoTrends meeting. So I've been learning more about some of the costs associated with the Community Flex Plan. And I still have some questions. I'd like to understand more about the $50,000 cost, why that is such a high ongoing cost instead of a one-time cost to set things up properly. And then in the presentation, there was a note about Roosevelt being overcrowded at 90%. And my understanding is that we could use the same flexible boundary to keep Roosevelt at 85% if the committee determines that's a more viable number. And if that's not possible, I'd like to understand that. And then also about the transportation cost. Is that the worst case, the likely case, or the like minimum amount of transportation required to accomplish the goals of the committee? Thank you very much.
Sure. So for the transportation, is that the worst case? Do you like, it doesn't really like, it needs to be done?
Am I answering those questions or no? Okay.
Yes, Ms. Kohler?
Just wondering if I'm answering those questions?
You don't need to answer the questions right now. If you need more time to answer them, you can then answer them later. Our next point in the agenda is the 2019-2020 Employee Handbook Modifications.
Thank you. Before we dive into the actual proposed modifications, I first wanted to take the opportunity to thank the Employee Relations Committee, who, on an annual basis, this is kind of their culminating activity. They work all year long, meeting to go through different pieces of the handbook and language and talk about different things that happen throughout the district. And there's a process in terms of how information comes to the ERC or the Employee Relations Committee. And then what happens with that language or those items in terms of becoming a modification for a handbook, language change. So regarding that first, or that process, first of all, sometimes things just come up in the day-to-day ongoings of the district. And things happen, and we say, oh, we should really look at this. And then that's something that goes to the ERC. Or there's something that we get an illegal notice or modification from one of our legal counsel representatives who says, this is a modification, you should really take a look at this for, to see how it affects your handbook language. We have our ongoing review of the employee handbook, because no matter how many times multiple sets of eyes can look at the same piece of information, something happens, and then you say, oh, look at that. That's not what we thought it said, or this isn't how we thought that it read until it actually comes into play. So there's just an ongoing review on an annual basis of the different pieces of information in the handbook. And then finally, through the BIC process. So each building has a Building Improvement Committee. And each of the building's representatives on that BIC talk about issues or concerns that come up in the building. They submit their minutes from their monthly meetings to me. I review all of the minutes from all of the buildings in the district. If there's individual things that can be addressed through different members of the executive team, I send those minutes out to those individuals so that they can respond to the building leadership to say, here's the answer to the question that your BIC committee had. If I start to see a pattern of things come through those building minutes or the BIC minutes from different buildings, that wouldn't indicate that it's specific to that one building, but perhaps it's in two or three or maybe more building minutes that I see over the course of the year, then it would be an item that I would take forward to the ERC to say, we should really look at this in terms of a possible inclusion in the handbook or a modification to the handbook. And so those are the ways that the ERC gets information to look at to bring to you in terms of modifications to the handbook. Any questions on how the process works? Okay. All right. So the information that you have before you, and that Secretary Iverson is so nice to put up on the screen for us. Thank you, Patty. So you'll notice that on the left-hand side, there is a number in red, which indicates which modification that we're speaking about. The first section has to do with Part 1 of the Employee Handbook, which is the part of the handbook that applies to all employees in the district. It doesn't matter which employee group you're in. These pieces of information in Part 1 affect and are pertinent to all employees. So the first modification we have listed there is number one. And this has to do with the ADA requirements for accommodation procedures. So of course, the district has always had information related to accommodations for ADA purposes through legal requirements. However, we've never had anything in the handbook that would tell an employee, these are the steps that you go through to be able to request modifications through ADA. And so this section here is what that language does, and obviously why we felt we needed to communicate it to employees. Number two, again, still in Part 1 of the handbook, this section is related to emergency school closures. Not that we've talked about that at all this year, maybe once or twice. But in the aspect of emergency school closures, we did have some modifications to the handbook. This first part was just to make things a bit more easy to understand. We've always had the bulleted list of positions that regardless of the school closure day, you're still expected to report, because whatever the function of that position is, is pertinent to the function of the district, even though school may be closed. So we went ahead and we titled that group, Emergency School Closure Report Positions, because it's a variety of different positions from all different employee groups. And so there was no one consistent way to identify these positions. And so we went ahead and titled it, so it was easier to refer to. And then you can see that there's a couple of different positions that were added in. The Buildings and Grounds Secretary position, that has to do more specifically with the facility use during an inclement weather day or a school closure day, and making sure that the person in that position is available to work with the community in terms of what is or is not going to happen as a result of that closure. The yellow part, you can see that we took out, because obviously, that's not something that happened this year, because we needed to make up, we needed to make up those days. And then the first cook and the kitchen manager were also listed just more for clarification, because that's already something that had been happening. Under the late start, two-hour delay, you can see, again, we use the Emergency School Closure Report Positions title for the listing of staff. And what we changed in this section was to say that the people that hold those positions during a two-hour delay or late start, people in those positions should still report to school or to work as soon as they can, dependent upon safety conditions. However, all other staff should just report two hours past their regular start time. So in the past, it was basically everybody was supposed to start as soon as they could, depending on weather. And we've modified that to say, unless you're one of those required to report positions, you can just come in two hours after your regularly scheduled time. Number three, you could see indicates, again, still in that first section, false reports. This is part of the review that we do with handbook language to try to be as consistent as we can in all aspects. So everywhere else where we talk about, employees may be disciplined. Anywhere else in the district, whether it's in the handbook or policies where we talk about that language, it's always followed up by up to and including termination. And that piece was missing here, so we added that. And then instead of work reports at the end, we changed that to work-related matters, so that it was a little bit more encompassing and not so specific to an actual document. Number four is recommended by the district's insurance agent. Many of these pieces had already gone into effect this school year, and worked through the business office to try to make that as smooth as a transition as possible. Number five, this is the information that we worked with Policy and Governance on related to creating a system-wide, a systematic process to work through the district that would replace the language we currently have for reclass, hourly reclass policy. The purpose of this was twofold. Number one, to replace the reclass policy, because I think that what I chaired with Policy and Governance is that the intention of that and the reason that you had had that added to the handbook wasn't working the way that I think the board had intended. It was probably doing exactly the opposite. And so we wanted to make it based upon the recommendation of Policy and Governance to make it more systematic and less individual. And so with this new process, you can And so with this new process, you can see that it has more to do with the district reviewing job descriptions on an annual basis and then working with a compensation consultant to determine if the salary grade that's assigned to that job is still appropriate based upon what we're expecting out of the job description. You can see there, it says, as identified here at the end of the first paragraph, and then there's a separate cycle document. That document lists which positions would be looked at in the first year of the five-year cycle, the second year, and so on, so that employees would know based upon the position they hold in the district, which year their position would be up for that systematic review, and they wouldn't have to make the effort to go forward and do all the work to say, this needs to be looked at because the salary grade assigned to my job isn't at the level that I feel it should be at. The district will take that ownership and will do that for every position in the district on that five-year rotating basis. Number six, this was language that was previously taken out about pay periods and how many we have in the school year, and now it's being added back in. And this had to do with the fact that every seven years or so, the cycle of pay periods creates an additional pay period in a school year calendar, which can create havoc for our employees. And so after further review, it was determined that this language should be put back in so that that, that piece doesn't happen. Number seven, the direct deposit payment method. This is just a change to reflect, bringing the language up to reflect the current process. Number eight was again, one of those reviews. We had changed the actual language related to the calculation when we went to sick days and personal days. That language changed several years ago, however, we have this nice example for people who are more visual with numbers in the handbook, and we hadn't changed the example to update it to the language, so that's being updated there. Number nine is the District-Wide Sick Leave Bank Modifications. There's a lot of pieces here that come into play relating to why the ERC made these recommendations. First of all, I can tell you that when this went into effect back in 2013, 14 maybe, the purpose of the donation bank wasn't to make sure that employees never suffered a day without pay in the district if they had to be out for a medical situation. It was to try to bridge the gap between employees' sick leave balance, short-term disability if they have it, and then because that's something they select on their own, it's not a district-sponsored benefit, and then long-term disability, which is a district-sponsored benefit, and every employee in the district has that paid for 100% by the board. And so the whole point was to try to bridge that time from employee, when employees ran out of their paid leave to when long-term disability kicked in. And over the course of the years, with different modification changes that we made with literally the best intentions at heart, what this has turned into is more so of a, the school district is going to guarantee that I'm never going to be suffering a day without pay if I have to be out for some type of a medical situation. Our current language is very broad, and so therefore encompasses a lot of different situations for our employees. What's wound up happening by the extension of, you know, that broad language is the fact that our most needy employees who truly don't have the option of whether or not they can work because of the medical situation that they, situation that they have occurring, they're not able to get the days that they need to bridge that gap as we had originally intended. And so there's a lot of discussion among the committee members about, this is going to be a big change, we knew it was going to be a big change, it's going to affect many people. But if we go back to what the original intent of the donation bank was, it was to make sure that we were able to help the most needy medically challenged employees with their situation of bridging that gap. And so you can see that those changes have been made. Again, part of the reason is just to make sure that everybody's able to get the days that they need. And Patty, if, just because I'm not sure how to work the document camera. I'm sorry? Yes. If I just do this? You know, it's technology, so. Okay. There. Move all of my other stuff out of the way. Thank you. So this information goes back to 2013, and it's just a, kind of like a highlight of all of the data that we've been able to collect regarding those employees who have needed the bank, have applied for the bank, and whether or not they were able to get the amount of time that they needed. So you can see that 172 employees received the donations through the donation bank. Twenty-two of those have received donations in two different school years, and three of those have received donations in three different school years. Thirty-one of the 172 employees that received donations are no longer employed by the district, either they've retired or resigned. And then this information in the chart, I think is what, what the committee really focused on when we looked at trying to make sure we're, we're creating language that was going to affect the people that needed it the most. So the way that it works is if you need the donation, donation bank, you get, you have the opportunity to request 20 days. If you're still out after that, you can get another 20 days and then another 20, for a total of 60 days. And that's dependent upon what your medical need is. Some people don't need 60, some people need 60 plus. And so depending on whatever your specific situation is, that's what's defined in this chart as the maximum allowable donations. So you can see when we first started this in 20, or I'm sorry, yeah, in 2013, 14, there were 13 people that requested donations. Twelve of those people received their maximum donation, depending again on their medical needs. So the percentage of people that received the maximum that they could have based on their situation was 92.31%. As you walk through those percentages, you can see that the following year, 95% of the people received what they needed. In 1516, we dropped to 85.71%. In 1617, we made some language changes, which changed the amount of time away from your need that you could apply for the days, and then as well, it included the childbirth component for mothers during those six to eight weeks of medically necessary time. So in 1617, it's highlighted in green because we made some language changes in that year that were pretty significant to people's availability to get the maximum that they needed. And so you can see that that dropped from 85% to 44%, and then each year since that has continued to drop. And this year, as of just last week or the week before, only just over 9% of our employees have been able to get the days that they needed based upon their requests for donations. And the reason that they're not getting what they need is because the, the system is so overloaded with requests that people aren't, there, there's been a, either I'm almost desensitized to the ongoing emails because there's emails that come out every day on a daily basis asking for donations. So I think that compared to the 13 that we had or the 12 that we had in the first couple of years, now we're at 49 and 44. And if you assume that at the maximum, each of those individuals could have requests sent out three different times, that's a lot of communication from the HR office to employees asking if they're willing to donate days to people. And so unlike in the beginning where it was like, oh, my gosh, this employee, whoever it is, they're really in a, in a tough situation. That, that communication happened 13 times that first year. Last year, that happened 49 times. And so again, 49 times at the minimum, it could have been three times that depending on how many emails had to go out for each person. So there's just, there's way too many requests, and so that's the reason that people aren't getting what they need. It's not so much that, that there isn't enough people to donate, it's more so that people hold on to things, they know that somebody's got something coming up, so they're not going to give the days because they're going to wait until someone else comes with, you know, a situation that they're aware of. So this picture just kind of paints what the committee considered when we looked at the fact that we needed to make some changes because what we originally set out to do with this policy is not what it's currently doing. And we really want to be able to affect those employees who need it the most, and currently it looks as if they're not able to get what they need based on our language. So the language modifications, Patty, do I just hit this button again? Or do you do that? Thank you. The language modifications that have to do with the bank really focus on catastrophic illness or injury, and that being the criteria for being able to apply for the donation bank. All of the language that's before you has been vetted by legal counsel to make sure that we're still abiding by the correct things that we needed to. Patty, could you just roll it down a little bit? That's okay. Or up or whichever way it needed to go. Page four. Thank you. So yes, this has all been vetted by legal counsel as well as we surveyed other districts and the donation process that they use if they have one, and this more in line fits with what we saw in the districts that did have it, not everybody does. But this again focuses more on the employees who have a catastrophic illness or injury, and then provides them the opportunity to get the days that they need. So that's the information that you'll see in number nine. Number 10, personal leave. This, this modification has more to do with our current sub situation than anything else. And when the ERC talked about this, we specifically spoke about the fact that if in the near future, things change with this sub situation across the state and we're no longer at a shortage for subs, that some of these modifications could be reconsidered and additional modifications could be made. But for an exam, so again, oops, the, the modifications all have to do with being able to have teachers and aides and anybody else who assists our students actually in classes in front of kids when people are being absent. So just as a point of reference, last week Friday, we had 17.8% of our staff that were absent. That's 331 absences. 331 absences. Out of those, 47 of those went unfilled. So 47 positions that needed to have somebody substitute for them and fill in for them, 47 of those went unfilled. So what happens in those situations? A lot of hustle and bustle in the buildings to try to be able to be creative and get things covered so that students have what they need. And it certainly isn't as ideal as having your regular person in that position, and it's also not as ideal as having a sub in that situation. So all of these modifications came about as, from the aspect of, we just, we as every other district and state is experiencing a major crisis with our subs. And until that comes back to a place where that isn't the case, we needed to put some more parameters in terms of when people could be gone in the process that it looks like to have that time, because we can't continue to have 47 physicians that go unfilled. Another example would be just this week Wednesday, we're already looking at 200 absences for the day. So, and that doesn't include anybody who'll call in sick on Monday or on Tuesday night for Wednesday morning, because we all know that that happens. So this language, these two pieces of modification directly related to that. And again, we talked specifically about the opportunity to go back in and review this if that sub crisis would ever change, and that the only reason we were looking at this was because of the, the sub crisis. So. Number, oh, it's still finishing on, in that area, changing parent conferences, parent teacher conferences to family teacher conferences, just to be consistent with other changes in language in the district. Number 13, absence approval. This is simply updating language to what currently happens, to include that all absences which require additional approval are listed in this section because payroll deduction was not, and that does include that. Starting with number 14, we're now into the section of the employee handbook that deals with certified staff members. And the first one there for number 14, this is an updated link to the handbook for certified staff compensation system. And so we, we have two different documents, we have the employee handbook, and then we have the certified employee compensation system. And that's the document that was created when we created the new compensation model back in July 1st of 2016. And so this is just simply linking those two documents together, so now you'll be able to click on this if you're in this portion of the handbook. Number 15 is updating, or modifying the early retirement deadline from March 1st to February 1st. This is for certified staff members to let us know that they intend to retire at the end of the current school year, whichever that school year is. This goes in line with other districts and what other districts are asking of their employees. This also will help greatly with our staffing process to put us farther ahead in terms of the hiring and replacing of staff. And so you can see that it's moved from March 1st to February 1st. Number 17, this puts us into the administrative section of the handbook, and you can see that number 17 is just updating language to be consistent with what all of the documents say, which is assistant principals. Number 18 is separating the 11-month and 10-month administrators, because several years ago when we created 11-month administrator positions, those two positions at the secondary level, those two positions received the 4th of July holiday and was not indicated in the handbook, so we've updated that to be reflective of the practice. Professional compensation, again, still under the administrative section, the travel allowance, all these positions that you see listed there in those bulleted items receive a travel allowance. The reason that we have it listed in the employee handbook is because that component is not listed in their individual administrator contracts. And so we wanted to make sure that it was accounted for in a document, and that's why it's listed here. Number 20, this is the non-affiliated section of the employee handbook. The homeless and homebound coordinator, those are updates to titles, information allergist. If you have an allergy, feel free to contact the information allergist and they will assist you. The information analyst, again, an update in the title of the position. And then you can see that there are four green positions in Group Three that are removed from Group Four. The purpose of that is that Group Four, way back when these positions were created, they were allocated at that point in time like administrator-level benefits, and the duties of the staff that are placed in those IT positions were not administrator-level duties. So the individual duties more closely matched those of other positions in Group Three, which is why we made that change. And eliminating Group Four addresses the equity with the benefit levels for the individuals with the same responsibilities. Now, there are a handful of people that are still in these positions from back when those benefits were granted to them. Each of those people who will be affected will get a individual letter that says, you're moving from this group to this group, however, here's your individual benefits, so that it doesn't get lost in the shuffle and suddenly they're at a different group. They will receive an individual communication. Number 21 is simply removing everything related to the Group Three and Group Four that we just talked about. And the only piece, I think that on page 13, the language in blue, one more page, Patty. There you go, right at the top. That language was cut and paste error, I think inadvertently removed at one point in time in a modification of handbook language, and that should not have been removed, so we've put that back in there so that people that fall into that area can be- So we've put that back in there so that people that fall into that area can be assured that they are still going to get the benefits that are listed in that section. And then the only other piece has to do with the last part of the handbook, which is the coaching section. And you can see here that we've changed, actually calling the district's facility scheduling system "school dude" to leaving it more generic and calling it the district's scheduling system, so that regardless of what program the district would ever use, the language would still be pertinent. And then adding in the fact that all coaches are responsible for abiding by both policy 830 and then the exhibit of 830.1. So that was true before, but it just wasn't located here in the section of the handbook. So, any questions on anything?
Thank you very much for this update. Any questions from board members? Any questions from the public? Hearing none, then we'll say thank you. Our next point in the, in the agenda is a discussion on possible first reading of policy Sorry, there. So we'll proceed to the reading. Commissioner Nordine, would you like to begin, please?
I'm happy to do so, but if Commissioner Klinkhammer or Harder would like to read it, and that it's their committee and they've worked so hard on it, I'd be happy to give that, I'll do it. I'm happy to. I love, I'm excited about this as well, but this might be fun for either of you if you'd like to.
Lori has invited me to read it, which I appreciate. It is the policy though, Claire Area School District, to consider the establishment of leap zones as approved by the school board. Leap zones are ECASD-certified staff initiatives that primarily function as embedded programs within ECASD schools and all applicable state requirements for public schools. The principals shall oversee the operational parameters of each leap zone as defined by a performance agreement. The LEAP committee will review each leap zone annually and provide a report to the school board. Leap zones shall follow the approved process and serve to provide an additional avenue to increase student engagement in and ownership of learning, educate the whole child by using multiple measures to assess academic achievement and social, emotional growth, foster innovations that may see wider deployment in the universal program, appeal to educators who seek to investigate and implement additional research-based learning environments, achieve goals set forth by the school improvement plan, and align with policy 310, equitable educational opportunities for all students enrolled in ECASD. All leap zones shall be programs of choice. Enrollment in any leap zone shall always be optional for students and families. Leap zones should be established and sustained in a positive climate of interdependence, collaboration, and ownership among all entities of the ECASD. The school board as the formal approver of leap zones recognizes leap zones as programs initiated and implemented primarily by ECASD-certified staff. I don't know if I read the cross-reference to the 332 exhibit as well, just for completeness.
Thank you. Commissioner Klinkhammer.
Thank you. In addition to Aaron's very fine reading of, of the new policy, I did want to call out Ms. Kohler and also Principal Johnson and Principal Riley, who put a lot of effort and time into, extra effort and time into creating the policy and the exhibit that went along with it. So thank you for all their good, hard work.
Thank you very much indeed. Commissioner Harder?
I'd like to echo that. Thanks very much. Coming into a process, Ms. Kohler in particular, coming into a process that was new, I know you had a lot to take on, and just really grateful for your leadership through, through that work. And of course, to Principals Riley and Johnson, and also to Commissioner Klinkhammer, who likewise came into, you know, and I will say, an interesting situation and handled it just so beautifully. And I'm great, very grateful for the work that everybody has done on this committee.
Thank you very much. I would like to say that the way in which this committee function has been redefined really will help us to pay closer attention to school improvement plans and provide a real opportunity for teachers across the district to inscribe their visions into the building's plans, which is what we, the level of participation we want to secure. So I really appreciate it. Thank you. So this will be included in the next session consent agenda. It is 8:39, and we've completed our agenda for the night. Do you have any requests for future agenda items? I'm sorry?
I'd just like to request that the demo and trends recommendation be an individually considered resolution.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, since I wasn't sure, I just didn't want to assume that it would be.
No, no, no. Thank you very much. It will. Thank you. The agenda, the agenda-setting committee will meet tomorrow at 8:00 a.m. here in the school building. And meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Oh, sorry. I'll take that out. I need a motion to adjourn the, the meeting. I cannot do it by myself.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Having a motion and a second. All those who approve, say aye. Those who oppose or abstain? Thank you. Meeting is adjourned.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the O'Clare Area School Board. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067, or online at valleymediaworks.org.